You put a private request forward in the agenda. So it's time for the first reading. You have to write out that.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Is there any other discussion? Okay, let's get the vote. Kevin?
Hi.
Adrian?
Hi.
And I'm Arnie.
All right.
And I go high as well, motion carries. And next step, we're going to dismiss two executive session to consider the dismissal of disappointing of or to clear complaints or targets rather than a public officer, employee, staff member, or agent unless he or she requests an reading ORS 192.660 subsection 2 subsection B. And also to consider records of death by law from public exception, ORS 192.660 subsection 2 and subsection A.
Arnie, we're switching over to the other link.
Got it.
Adrian, let me know when you're ready.
Fire away.
Oh, okay. All right, welcome back, everyone. We're going back to our public session and Adrian kindly pointed out that we did miss approving our consent agenda. I was getting excited and I'm like, oh, maybe we could be agenda of so long. So do I have a motion to interrupt the consent agenda?
So I move this to the consent agenda.
Second up.
Thank you so much. Do we have any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Arnie? Okay, it's off.
I'm already muted.
I saw it not go up and down. Any opposed? Thank you, Arnie. All right, motion carries.
All right, and then, Ms. Kirven, regarding our executive session, I would also move that we give the board's authority to respond to the motion.
Thank you. Do I have your second?
Second.
Thank you, Arnie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
One.
Oh, Kevin?
Oh, would that include a response from the superintendent as well?
Yes, that would be fine. Have to review. Any other discussion? Let's start, we'll do a vote, actually. Arnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yep.
Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Arnie?
Yes.
Myself, I go high. The motion passes. Thank you. And then, we are moving up on the agenda. Our lovely exciting vote through out of state power request for our baron's choir. Are you gonna sing a question call?
Why not? We're gonna do some Katy Perry.
Are you serious?
No.
He's supposed to ask you questions. It's generally come at me now.
Almost got that approach.
So this is Carrie, last year's choir president, she would prefer to take the main to tell you about.
So as you already know, we are asking for a trip out of state. We are asking to go down to California, Los Angeles to be specific, to go to a clinic about choir skills at USC. And then we're also planning to go to Disneyland where we can have like this Disney musical experience where we learn your choir skills with a little bit of magic. And there's a bunch of other fun kind of activities and experiences that we're supposed to have that we may never tell you about. So we're gonna go to USC and have a clinic there, which is gonna be a great opportunity for us to improve our musical skills and to practice if we qualify for state to market for state set and to really improve that. Also, the opportunity at Disneyland will be super fun and just a fun way for our choir to agents and. Also, the, we're going to a Roman musical, Beatles, which there's not very many high level productions that come near there, so that'll be a really good opportunity for all of us, every day kids to go enjoy.
Oh, my God.
Uh, yeah. I'm Jackson. We're really looking forward to this opportunity because especially this year and I believe it's also someone applies to choir. We're a very young band, so these clinics are gonna be incredibly valuable to us, especially with some major changes that we made to our band. I absolutely look forward to this and the opportunities that will be given to us.
Um, we are the first like band, like marching band in like the more activity band since a couple of years, I would say. So it would be like a great opportunity for like our band and the choir kids to all go on a stay and explain, experience a bunch of fun stuff.
Absolutely, and you wanted to put a shirt on.
How many kids would be going?
Uh, the choir right now is about forty-five bandits.
Real similar number.
Very similar, so we have about seventy-ish plus, a chaperone or ten kids or so.
And how did you come upon this opportunity?
Yeah, this is a little of my doing. This is a trip that I have taken with previous choirs that come in every other year. So it was a tradition that happened there. A lot of choirs end up making this kind of trip down there. Disney does a lot of cool stuff in terms of what they can do in terms of performance or just in terms of workshops. So you can get down there and pop in.
So I remember when I was in high school, actually, one of the best things that we did at the marching band is we did a parade through Disneyland, under 18th Street. Like eight o'clock in the morning, get a hundred and twenty band members up, go parade in 18th Street. And then they said, all right, we're free to go, be back here at nine PM or whenever the party closes. And it was an amazing trip, so I hope that is amazing for you as well.
Put the line back on. Go and do all the things and have fun to go go to Disney too.
Well, don't learn something. Do you guys?
Working out of a drive after all.
Do you guys perform in that on the stage? They have that little performance area now.
Yeah. There, uh, we won't be performing in front of anybody other. We'll all be doing backstage stuff.
Okay. Um, we'll just get up there and say, oh, yeah. Okay, anything else from your group? Okay, does it want a motion?
Don't move.
Okay, we have a motion to send these votes to California and to get a second. Okay, Diane, who's first? There's a session. Yeah, I think we'll have fun to say, let's go for a vote. Arnie?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
And Arnie?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye. Adrian?
Aye.
Yay! Have fun.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we gotta go look at that. Oh, wait, yeah, that's what I'm putting in. Okay, public steps first. Let's see, Carrie?
Do I do all this? Maybe you're.
Oh, maybe up here?
You're supposed to be at the next.
No, it doesn't, it's not on, so if you wanna stand up there, you can. The desk will pick you up wherever you are.
This will pick you up as long as you speak up so that the people.
I was gonna say, my television is real. The audio was terrible, but that's it. Uh, good evening. Uh, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Carrie Hirschjung and I'm having a library at Madison and Little Pirates preschool. And I'm here to share some library news because I usually do it, but it's not really everyone. Um, Little Pirates preschool will have its own library this year. We're really, really excited about that. Thanks to grant funding and a community donation, if you see. And the small inventory that we've kind of putting together the last couple of years. Um, Little Pirates will begin this year and hoping that two hundred fifty to three hundred of their own books. Madison Library will still supplement, you know, students have specific requests or if they're doing a field study. But we can still bring some books that were from Madison. Um, and this time the library may still be a cartmobile. They don't have four walls, so like, you know what, we're getting there. And it's just beginning. Really excited about to give them their own designated books. Um, I think we have our own cards. From library community, very exciting stuff. Um, this past summer, thanks to community grant and on a daily community grant, Madison Library, our newly opened for checkout lines, because we gave out two hundred fifty key books to our students, families, and our community neighbors. Um, there were also key pockets and strawberries to munch on and the kale is still growing, which my daughter is very happy about. Flying in the night. And lastly, the first week of October marks this year's banned book week. Um, American Library Association documented over one thousand two hundred sixty-nine demands to censor library books and resources during two thousand and twenty-two. I think that's over double what it's been in town. Um, the highest number ever recorded in the twenty-seven years they've been collecting data. The theme for this year is let freedom read. Um, and this is a quote from the American Library Association. When we ban books, we're closing off readers to people, places, and perspectives. But when we stand up for stories, we unleash the power that lies inside every book. We live with the array of voices that need to be heard and the scenes that need to be seen. Let freedom read. And so I do have a pen for each of you. And David, can you just say one for Arnie?
Absolutely.
So I'll, I'll suppose around, but you can get one. And I'd hopefully join me in celebrating our freedom to read. Something you should never take for granted. We're in the community, it's a really fighting voice right now. And we certainly have ourselves there. Or you can do any activities for around that or? I really probably won't. I have in the council, I'm kindergarten preschool through second grade now. And when I say ban books, they all either they just use it yet or they just, they don't type out. It sometimes get into some discussion. When I was at Blossom, the one year ago, I put up a huge bulletin board, one preschooler comment. And he said, I can't wait to go to the library because they have dangerous books. Yeah. So that was great. But anyway, mainly what we do, we celebrate by giving them an incredible library. They're very, very fortunate at Madison to have an excellent library. I don't know if I can even wish, but in other languages as well. I'm trying to find a word. Let's see what we can do. So anytime we have a student coming out of country, we try to make sure we have these top six books in our home. And that's a beautiful. We love the. So I love the challenge. I'm glad you're here.
Oh, yes. Yes.
I can't even do that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else can we have up for?
We have Megan Vanderline.
Oh, welcome. Hello. Hi. Hi. Um, I'm a parent to one of the kids here. And I have a couple of questions about some emails that I've received over the last few weeks. And I'm not really sure what, where to start with this. First of all, there was obviously a breach of my information, my child's information, or they wouldn't have gotten mine. So I'm like, how did this happen? Does any, have you guys seen the emails? Do you know anything about them?
I was, yeah, I was for, if this is the email you were talking about, I was sort of getting one.
I sent it to Mr. McCord the day I got it, so that's, I forwarded it to him and asked him what was going on. So, and I, this is my next step, because he didn't know where it came from either.
Yeah.
So they, some of the names on those, that stuff. So I've talked to other parents, some of them I do recognize in there. Um, some of them said they got the email through ParentView. So how would these parents get this email from ParentView? I'm, I'm, I'm concerned, like, I'm very concerned. Not just that, the, the base of the emails seems kind of off-putting as well. Like, I, so my question is what's like, were there secret trips out of town? Were these like, is this, if it was, where is it secret from? Like, was it supposed to be kept from the whole school or just certain parents or pride festivals? Like, I'm not, my concern is like, who's taking these kids? Why my kid wasn't invited first of all? Like, and not, and that's really what it is. It's like, if we're doing all-inclusive, then it's everybody needs to be included. That means it should have been a school-wide thing. Everybody should have got the opportunity to say yes or no whether their kid wanted to go. The rest of it, like, I don't even know what to say. I went and looked at some of those board meetings and I'm not really sure. Like, they're talking about lawyer fees and all kinds of stuff that's been, so there's a bunch of stuff in there that's just, I don't even know what to say.
Well, thank you for bringing this forward. I would say that public service superintendent, public has more information around. And then we talked about data breach, you talked about the GSA event that first some students too. And then you said something about secret meetings. There were no secrets.
Well, they call, it wasn't secret, but they called them, what, if listed in the YouTube channels is special board meetings is what it says. They say special board meetings and there's a whole bunch of them in August, back to back to back. And I thought board meetings only happened on the first month, Monday of the month. Why were there so many board meetings in August also? Why, I mean, I understand they're executive orders, but, but what's being discussed in the executive orders that we aren't being privy to as well? Like, that's all.
Someone's trying to get the information.
Yeah, and this information was leaked out for some reason. Someone's trying to, and if I'm obviously the only one gonna stand here and say something, my kid, like I said, why wasn't my kid invited to the pride parade? She is, I mean, she has a boyfriend now, but she's openly gay, like, a bunch of her friends are openly gay and they do nothing about this, so. I'm kind of, you know, like, if we're gonna do inclusive and everybody, it needs to be everybody, not just who I would be picking and choosing these kids. But what event, what this, what group of this, where this was, like, like I said, it should be all-inclusive.
I think the data breach, the GSA event, what Paris can help it out, and we can't hardly discuss the board meetings.
Do you want me to respond now?
Okay.
So we have been looking into the data breach, first of all. Um, I've met with the tech director, technology director, he has been also looking into it. We have a list, uh, we were in our system able to generate a list of everybody within that has a Cusack School District email address, received it. The email was anonymous, it's a Gmail account, we can't trace it, so we have no idea who's sending it. But we also were forwarded the community part. Um, so we have a list of community members, with their parents, some of them not. And all we can ascertain is the trainer, so we don't know.
They forward it to you guys as well?
Yes, I received a forwarded email from.
I've got a list because I was CC'd in the email. That's how I know what the rest of these parents, what some of these, like I said, some of the emails I recognize from the parents' name, from the email address, because I know those parents.
Right. But you got it first, Karen.
I got it first. Yeah, I did not receive it as a parent, but I got it from.
So we were looking, we're trying to find a pattern because it's a, you know, about forty or fifty staff members, about forty or fifty community slash parent members from an anonymous Gmail. We can't see a pattern of why those people were selected or how that anonymous person got your email. They simply don't know how they got that email. So, and it's anonymous, it could be someone we know, I mean, or someone we don't know.
I tried to keep it back a bunch of times and it's able to respond. Like, I asked them how they got my stuff and they just, they sent me another email with another link to more, more special board meetings. I was like, oh, I never, I mean, and this is where I came, so I don't.
And as your second question about, so Marshall High School has a student group called the Day Strain Alliance, so GSA. In May, students that are involved in the GSA were invited by the University of Oregon. They host an annual GSA, so Day Student Alliance for student groups. Um, and the one at the University of Oregon has traditionally been for all of the GSA's, it's in county.
Got it.
So Cottage Grove, Junction City, like all over.
So it wasn't a group that was a, a club that was.
It was a club, just like the band was here asking, do you wanna?
No, I understand that completely.
So everyone, um, I went and met with the GSA group in May and said, we have this opportunity to go to this GSA Leadership Summit with the University of Oregon. Are you all, is this activity group, because it's specifically for GSA?
Yeah, got you.
Interested in attending? And the students were, and I said, okay, well, you need to have a parent permission slips. Um, and so every student had a parent permission slip. And we went up the day before Memorial Day, we said, that's Friday, they hosted an all-day event. The activities were art-based, so there was weaving and.
So why would they, someone think that was, you were taking them to a gay pride?
So bad.
Yeah, why would they think you were taking them to a gay pride parade? Like, and why, I mean, I mean, like I said, I'm just sad that my kid didn't get invited. If that's what you guys did to, like, I'm just, you know, making sure that if we're all inclusive there, I understand that completely. And that was my question, was it a group of kids? Was it this? Was, I mean, when I asked him before, he said he didn't know, so this is my.
But everyone is welcome to join the GSA. Everyone in the GSA was invited to attend. So it wasn't meant to be a school parent, it was a specific leadership event for this specific.
Yeah, no. But that's understandable, yes, and that's understandable, yes.
Email just made it seem suspicious, so.
It was secret.
Figuring out what.
They're trying.
Yes, and yes, and I, you know, I, I have a kid that goes here and she's got a whole other two years of this school and I wanna make sure that she's included in all of the activities. Like, she's not in sports, she doesn't do none of that stuff, and she's definitely a gay, so she definitely needs to be. I've, she, she is, I'm sorry, she, I love her to death, but she, you know, that would be something she would wanna do if that was an option. I would totally let my kid go, so I'm totally down for that.
Oh, join GSA.
Yeah, have her join GSA.
I, I will do that, I will tell her that, because I didn't even know that was an option for her.
Upward for it too.
Yeah, I didn't know, I don't think she knows that. Like, she can test herself, well, she, she wasn't a very good kid in her freshman year, so she had a little bit of struggle, so she's in that much factor. But.
There was misinformation that's been posted on Facebook and circulated around. So I hope this, there's nothing, I hope if people ask, you can say it was for the GSA, dude's leadership development, and that's why we met.
I wonder why nobody said anything, like, none of the, the parents seen all that, why they didn't say anything, their kids that did go, why nobody stood up and said, hey, this is what it was? But, so what I called the superintendent's office, I'm not sure who I talked to there, so this brings up my next question, which I didn't even put on there. They said there was investigations going on, but it wasn't in regards to that, it was in regards to other stuff. So that's where I was like, what, and that's what actually brought me here, because like, what's? And then the, was the whole, just all of it, like, I would have known there were special board meetings, I'm like, this, none of this makes sense, so here we are.
So I, and it's amazing what you're seeing on social media, especially when there's discussion about controversial issues. And I think part of that came up because if I recall correctly, the GSA club was wanting to attend an event earlier in the year. And that got me mixed because the district didn't guarantee the activities and stuff would be presented there. So since, you know, the district didn't guarantee that, so that was not an appropriate thing for this group. And so that might be something that started some of this controversy. And then, you know, I, I know some of the groups where you, where you care information about, but there's a lot of people who are very hentai, out to the view.
Yeah.
There are a lot.
Well, yeah, I, I've seen the post on Facebook, so I didn't see a lot of that. That wasn't my concern at all. My, my concern was like the inclusive part of it and what is, you know, what is what you guys got behind our backs? Because like I said, my kids here, there's, we were talking about lawyer fees and a bunch of legal fees that were happening last year and this year. Then we're talking about, you know, not being included and the whole rest of it being secret, it's not.
Yeah. I think Tim's gonna speak on that part.
Exactly, that, the lawyer fees and all that is completely separate. There's been no lawyer fees at all with the GSA events.
Yeah.
Um, we tend, we like to have only one board meeting a month, and we actually like to not have any in July at all. It's usually our summer month.
That's why I like these summer break days.
Yeah, but we do, we do typically leave two, uh, months open a month, so if we have extra business. We were dealing with personnel issues, and so we have to have more board meetings. And when it's an executive session, we're either working with an attorney or there's some other ordinance that we are following to make sure that we're doing everything legal. Um, and that is closed to the public. So the public doesn't have any information on that, other than it's happening. What the public does have is any public meeting we do have, and every executive session starts with a public meeting, will dismiss into executive session. Before that executive session, we'll read you the ORS that it's relating to, to your, exactly, if you're, here's what it's related to. We're gonna talk about these things, right, you're not gonna have the content of that.
Got you.
And then they'll come back and then, and public meetings are all posted on YouTube.
Yeah, that's where, I, I watched quite a few of them, yeah, my staff.
Yeah, they're usually boring.
Well, I, I work and go home with three-year-olds, so sometimes he goes to bed, you know, takes a nap before.
And that's usually for fun.
Yeah, so right, right now, I think there's only six areas that we're allowed to go into executive session for. And then only one in the board, the board's allowed to actually probably say this session, and that's first student expulsion.
They just made, the whole email, the whole of it, just made it sound very sketchy, and like you said, it was a, they weren't forwarding, the one email was a CC email, but the second one I got wasn't. It was sent directly to me and I was the only one on it. So I don't know if that's because I responded to them and was like, you know, where'd you get my information? Like, why are you thinking that I care? Like, if my kid goes to a pride parade, like, I'm more mad that she didn't get invited, like, so they, I don't think they liked my responses, so.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, this is some mixed up for you.
Yeah.
And if you look at some of the meetings, I know I, I talked to our, our, our board secretary, and one of the meetings that gotten, didn't get quite there recorded right, it's a little chopped off. But, you know, the, the purpose for the executive sessions always stated the public meeting format. I believe for at least one or two of those, there was a member of the media present. It was told by those to contribute TNT or sixteen. So media are allowed to join those sessions, but it's not allowed to report on anything that falls under that executive session. We go off topic and start talking about something else. They can report on that because everything we do is, is online.
Also, the, the agendas are posted on our, our website the Friday before the meeting, and they will always have the ORS, the reason for the executive session.
Okay.
And then you can just throw that thing into Google and it will give you the, I don't put the whole law in there.
Okay.
I'm trying to save paper, but I do put what the ORS is in the purpose.
Okay.
So if you wanted to look into further, what are the reasons that could be in here? Then you can look at that ORS.
It's obviously not that big of a deal now, like, that's why I'm here, because I wanted to make sure, like, I needed reassurance from, you know, like, that it's not, but we're okay, so.
The last piece of that is usually the meeting, the meeting minutes for all of those are posted after meetings are done, but they don't get posted until they're approved in a regular public meeting. So our incentive agenda includes minutes for six of those meetings.
Okay.
So they'll be posted soon.
I got you, that's why they stopped. Yes, and that's another thing, they said, why did the meeting stop?
We have a kind of a board meeting.
Well, and then also, my first thought was like, who was in, why were we having meetings in the first place? So.
We didn't want to.
Yeah, no, I, that's why I was like, I don't want to get a word in debate either, so I thought we'd do.
Believe me, I was back east doing these meetings at midnight, so I didn't want.
Oh, well, that, okay. That doesn't sound fun at all. Well, I appreciate, thank you very much. So what's gonna happen with the data breach? Like, how, so what are we, what's gonna be done about that? Is there further, like, what other information was breached? Um, we probably, we reported it to the police. That's what my next question was, which I, because I was going to do that also, because they're studying, I mean, they got my information. If they can reverse it for a bunch of perverts, we can reverse it for somebody who's getting out emails over, trying to get our kids in trouble, you know, and trying to get you in trouble, that's a huge deal.
Right, so yes, the police report has been filed, the police have all the data and information from our tech teams, but you can scoop a Gmail account. Like, there's no way that you can scoop an IP address, so there's no way for us to trace.
So we. That would, that sounds really technically scoop an IP address, so, but I mean, especially for you sending an email to me, like, I am just, you know, I work down here subway, like, why would they send it to me? Why would they pick me and some of those other people on that list? Like, why would they pick those people? The one who put name on that list, her kids are little, they're not even in high school. How they picked that name, I'm very curious, because like I said, her kids don't go here. They're not even in junior high, are they? I don't think they are.
So, so we're trying, we just don't have the technology.
I think they have, we have to do it, but they probably are like, we're low.
They're playing a little prior.
Yeah.
They're still haven't done anything for us, so.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
I was gonna say, just to get any more, have any, if you're a superintendent, normal press, have a bumming this. I was gonna say, just to get any more, have any, if you're a superintendent, Norman Press, up above Mingus.
All right, I just sent him the Mr. Recorder, like I said, I just sent him the Mr. Recorder, because I was like, what is this, and he's like, I have no idea, I'm sending it to Ted, I thought, okay, that's fine.
Well, it's reached the superintendent by now, so we just scheduled to go see her.
Yeah.
And be able to get information.
You've obviously got my email address, so.
Thank you so much.
I got the rest of my information too. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other for public comment?
No ma'am.
We had one on, did you have somebody to send it to?
They rescinded it.
Okay. Thank you so much, and next up is our items for information, business office update.
Hello.
Hello.
So, um, I'd like to start with, you'll notice there's no financial presentation this month, and that is because, uh, the previous. Financial reports you guys have been working with is an Excel document that has been created by our previous business manager. But we had this really great software that we have already been utilizing that allows us to build very specific. Projections and trends for upcoming data and, um, to project the rest of the year's expenditures. And so I worked on Friday with a local woman who has been, she helps build these in our software for Castside. And we have built some brand new financial reports. They're not quite ready, but they will be ready for the October meeting, there'll be a lot more, um, informational. And a lot clearer as to how and why we're building the projections that we are, and it will allow us to hopefully budget better in spring. So you'll see those next month, but that's why we don't have August, so I'm sorry, guys. Um, as for enrollment, you'll see that I provided you guys with an enrollment document. And I pulled this on Friday from our synergy software. We are down from budget projections by twenty-three students, district wide. You will see. Likely that Eastside is down significantly in Kinder as well as Madison. They're both down, um. Twenty-four Kinder for Eastside and fourteen for Kinder in Madison. We. We are comparing currently on this sheet that you have, the end of June's numbers to the beginning of the school year. We are up from June's numbers, but, uh, there's always a decrease to the year, so. I have a, I have a sheet and I can send it to you guys at a later date that compares last September to the September. Um, last September. We, we had. Um, a significantly higher number than what we had in June, we went down, we lost about six percent of our students during the school year, from September to June. If we had that same projection for this year, we'll be down about another hundred and sixty students in June. So these are things to think about, that we are already lower in enrollment numbers than last year, and we will continue based on trends to decrease during this year.
Can we talk from the memorial?
Yeah, sorry.
Problem so big in series.
Sorry, yes, um, so we will likely have even a lower number in June, which is how they build our state school fund. So these are things that we're gonna need to look at during this year as a board. Um, and as an executive team and really come together as to how we're gonna build the staffing numbers while we're already facing, um, deficits next, next year. So just some things to be aware of.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
How many do they have? Where are the, especially for the others, our open kindergarten school. Um. What are those people still, do you have an idea, are they doing that for whatever?
I am not sure, I, there are significantly high in leadership members. That we've talked about in the last couple of meetings, that is something that adds a cabinet and characters looking at very in depth. We do know that River View, um, is now a accredited school. And we had had a significant number of students go there, we had a significant number of students go to Christ Lutheran, which is again expanded. So there are a number of, there are a number of reasons, I believe the attendance team is trying to get down to the bottom of the three of the committee committees. And I believe they're trying to get down to where the students are actually going. If there was an issue.
The attendance team at today, um, they went student by student, every, um, student that we thought was going to be enrolled and haven't, haven't shown up. First evidence advocates are gonna go out and, um, do outreach to find out exactly where the students are, and I think. We're looking at why, like why do more kinders show up? So what's interesting is for the first time, enrollment at Eastside in, uh, Milaoma, like down. But enrollment at Madison and Sunset on the West Side has gone up slightly. So that's what we were talking about, the catchment area for River View is more, and as their enrollment goes up, it's going to, it's impacted. Side of town more than the West Side of town. But our junior high and the high school numbers are down too, and that's where we see a lot of the interdistrict transfers. Um, and I've been monitoring those numbers, I know Adrian missed a conversation about it. Um, largely, most of our secondary students are transferring to either go to Northland High School or the general. Because we get all of those, what we don't get is, we get the interdistrict transfers forms for students who are transferring to another public school or public charter school. What we don't get, interdistrict transfers for private schools, so. We're speculating as, as to why that, that's happening, but we don't have that.
Something that can work out, are we?
Well, we can, and I know, I think Lisa Vassalio's on the line, we can get some numbers because we do have to provide federal funds. To eligible students in the private schools, so Lisa has annual meetings with our private schools, so data, I mean, Lisa, what kind of data might be available when we meet with these private schools?
I can, I, I, um, actually just got the numbers from, um, Christ Lutheran. And they had planned to expand, but they're not, and their numbers are relatively low, and I think as of today. The numbers that I got from them is they have ten kindergartners, um, at Christ Lutheran. And then, um, River View is a brand new, um, brand new as a private school, so we don't start the process with them, um. For our consultation until the spring. Um, we do have a child find obligation to, to assess their kiddos, but not to serve, so I'll be, I'm, I'll know more in the spring when I meet with them. But I, I know that there's ten at Christ Lutheran.
Thank you. And, um, which River View, is that the one of Allegheny?
Yes.
Oh, it's a long time.
Yes, it is.
Do we know other, like, I know you guys mentioned, do we know if your fund or feel like the other districts are experiencing similar?
Like shortages of kindergarten?
Yeah. Um, I, I haven't checked it, we have a superintendent paid Thursday, so we're going to, that's our first one since school started, so I'll get to know more on Thursday, but. It's certainly, uh, the GSA, we track enrollment across all ten districts. And enrollment has been trend, trending down across all ten districts. Hues Bay was the one that was actually kind of holding more stable than the other districts. Um, so we were holding on to a little bit more than the other districts, but I don't know for this current, since school started last week, what's happening.
Oh, we'll probably run that through that, um, for a kid, right?
I'm hoping, yeah.
And then. It's turning down for, um, Winter Lakes as well, because I thought they were in the next two, the top ones. Oh, Lisa, go ahead.
I found my email, okay, so for Christ Lutheran, they have ten kindergartners, six first graders, four second graders. Two third graders and five fourth graders.
Do you know anything about Winter Lakes enrollment, Lisa?
I do not, because they don't, um, they would have to, they're a charter school, so it looks, works a little bit different, so.
We looked at the numbers, I had it in my board packet, we always got in April. But we can resend that, where we did an analysis of the interdistrict transfers last year. We looked at how many students are transferring out and where they're going, and then we looked at how many students are transferring in and where they're coming from. And the bottom line was, we are losing about, um, as many kids. Um, more than we're gaining, so off the top of my head, it was roughly in the ballpark. We lost about a hundred and fifty students transferring out and gained about seventy-five hundred in. So we're at a deficit in terms of, of, of students transferring out to go to other districts. And again, that was a one year snapshot. If you think about a lifespan, you know, the trajectory of twelve years or whatever, over, um, the course of a kindergarten through grade twelve. That, um, that cum, accumulating, that, if we lost, if we're in a negative of seventy-five students one year, extrapolate that out ten years. I, it's not gonna be directly linear, but it will absolutely, I, we estimate, and we want to do, or we don't have the data system, we need to pull this report, we're gonna work on it, I've been working on it with. Um, Lena who oversees all of this to get those numbers, but I would safely estimate, we have about four hundred, at least, students that we are. Hues Bay students that are elsewhere, and that is substantial amount of ABMW revenue, um, that the district. Um, we are losing, um, and I know there's all kinds of complications, faith, toxicity and. Uh, various issues, and why are so many more students transferring out than transferring in, but this is something I am really, um. Interested and, and monitoring, because especially our enrollment's down this year, like it's really going to impact next year's budget.
We are down one hundred and two students from September of last year to Friday.
A hundred and two students, I mean, that's a lot, uh, that's four classrooms. That we're gonna have less of budget for next year, so that impacts across the district.
Um, Michelle took a question in here, how many stand ready to serve letters are we ready to send after our ten day drop period ends?
Um, I wasn't at the meeting today, was anyone at? The meeting, anyone? We had a facility meeting, expect to have a good time.
Bree, I think Bree could give you a report, she just texted me, so ask Bree, she's here.
Bree was at the attendance meeting today. Bree, are you able to respond?
Yeah, can you repeat the question?
Yes, it was, how many stand ready to serve letters are we ready to send out, send after our ten day drop period ends?
So ju, just to clarify, like how many do we have letters that we're predicting that we send out, or how many personnel do we have that will be doing it?
I'll, I'll, Michelle, what, what was your, uh?
A stand ready to serve letter is really related to special education, because I feel like that was the question, um, so that was the related. Inquiry.
No, we don't, I, I don't have many ready to serve letters to send out for special ed, but Bree, um, they were looking at how many students are no show this morning, so Bree could tell you that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is actually the one.
But when we talk about private school and charter schools, don't we need to send stand ready to serve letters for the people who don't show up?
For the private school, we, we know who those students are and the private schools aren't entitled to a FAP, so we don't send a stand ready letter, and the charter schools, we serve, so no. We would be sending out ready to serve letter to a homeschool student if we knew they were homeschooled.
Bree, do you have a sense of the numbers this morning that you all were discussing, the number of students that were no shows that we're doing outreach for?
We discussed, uh, specific kiddos that we, or students that we shared between all of, um, us advocates. Um. I know for K two. We have, uh. Two children as of this afternoon that we have not been able to either enroll or confirm enrollment anywhere at the. K two level. But I want to say maybe two at the three six. Um, Casey had to go a little early to deal with some, uh, discipline issues and the junior high was unable to log on today with the advocates, but. The numbers. Are a lot lower, I know, at the K two level of no shows or no communication from families that I have seen in the last six or seven years that I've been in this position. And it was, uh, it was pretty awesome to see that the kids that were in our schools last year are accounted for and we know where they are.
Yeah, that's good news, thank you, Bree.
Thank you. Nope, does anyone have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along there, see our superintendent's update.
Okay, all right. I would like to say, welcome back to school, everybody, um. Uh, I've, I've been hearing from folks, I've been asking everybody, I've seen how's it going? And by and large, I've been hearing reports that it's been going pretty smoothly, so I'm very pleased. I had the absolute great pleasure of spending the first morning when most of the children came back last Wednesday. At Blossom Gulch, where Milaoma is located this year. Um, I tried to visit every single classroom to check in, see how it was going, because Milaoma had to move over the summer to Blossom Gulch. Heavy lift, um, navigating the drop off in the morning with the buses and the traffic, um, just to see how smoothly it went. And I saw smiles. Um, the students were happy, I saw smiling parents, the teachers, we had great conversations. Um, their rooms looked beautiful, they did an incredible job getting everything set up in such a short amount of time. Um, and some of them, I just said, they really liked the Blossom Gulch costumes because they're so big and spacious and they have windows and natural light. So, um, there was really a nice positive feel, and I just want to thank all of the staff for having to make this move and, and its destination, it's resourceful, Little Pirates. I mean, this impacted tremendous amount of staff. Um, and it's so fun having Little Pirates asserted today and having destinations in the Milner Press building to see the students, it's so alive, there's so much energy. Um, and it was great, the playground's up and going, the littles were out in the playground behind Milner Press. So it's just been fun, and I want to do a special thank you, uh, to the facility staff and technology that made this happen over the summer, that's a huge heavy lift. Literally to move everything across and to get everything where it needs to be, um, and they did a fantastic job, so I'm just super proud of them, so, um. Yeah, it's been, it's been fun, but the one issue that has been coming up this past week, you, you might be hearing about it. Um, we continue, and this is a national trend and it's impacted here, we have a bus driver shortage. So, um, right now, I've been communicating with Beckett for a student, she's been great, um. Uh, they have a couple of drivers out for medical reasons, they've hired some new, but it takes about, she said, three weeks to get people licensed and trained and approved by ODE. She has several in, um, the queue that are gonna come on, but we're still looking at probably needing about eight more bus drivers. And how is this impacting, we've seen some delays at pickups, particularly like at the junior high and high school, even though we shifted the bell times to go a little later for the junior high and high school because they were waiting longer. It's still been, um, a, a significant delay those students are having to wait for their buses. So we're working on it, and another big impact has been, um, working with athletic department. Because of the driver shortage, we, we're having some troubles of getting enough of drivers to go to the athletic events and student activities. So we're really looking at innovative ways that we might address that, so I'm gonna put out a personal appeal, if anyone wants to be a substitute bus driver, maybe not interested in being full time or doing. You know, full routes every day, but if anybody is able to be a substitute driver that might be willing to get trained and get paid, it could be parents of athletes, it could be parents of band members. Cheerleader, like all of our groups, um, um, we, uh, for students, we can get you trained and you can get paid to be driving students, so we're looking into. Innovative ways to get more people available, um, so that we don't have to, some districts would have a camp plot let up events because they didn't have drivers available. Um, so we don't want that to happen here, so just, that's an issue that's circulating, I want in the community, please, if you have some time every once in a while to be a substitute bus driver. We would love to train you and have you, um, CBL, yeah, type twenty, like there's different levels for different levels of training. Um, and we'll take all of them, anyone agreeing?
Kevin.
So, uh. My, for my update, overall, I, a big theme right now for the central office is the state and also Oregon Department of Education. Um, we have been selected to participate in five audits and monitoring sessions this fall, which is highly. Unusual to have that many going on. many going on at once.
People in audit, you don't use it?
Yes. Voluntold?
Let me pull this.
What was that?
You sound like you have.
What, are they talking to me?
Yeah.
Sorry, what?
You were just saying something, we didn't catch it.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay.
Okay. So I just wanted to give you an update of the audits that we have going on from the state right now, so it's going to take us a lot of time and.
If we're invited to them, or if we're invited, that means getting more students?
No, I was being polite.
Oh, well then we're not, okay, we're.
We are being told. We were volunteered. Yes.
Voluntold.
Voluntold, that's what I said, I'm sorry, I should have been more specific. The state has selected us to.
You don't say yes, girl.
To participate, the state has selected us to participate in five mandatory audits, one of which I think you're aware of, they're looking at our special education finance, relevantness of that work issue, another one is ongoing, it's Title 1A audit from the spring, we have to get everything in by October 1, and Title 1A is our federal grant around our services for economic students and students, so we're working on getting all of that finished up in the next week or two to get to the state. We also have Title 3, which is our English language learners program, which is due November 15th coming up, and I know Lisa, later on in the agenda, we have the annual ELL report, which is part of the requirements for the audit the board will be looking at tonight. We also have another, a second special education audit, besides the finances one, we have a second one, which is a general supervision audit, which is due January 15th, and that's where they'll actually come to a file review, where we have to pull 40 IEPs, like, order, 40 files, where they'll do like a three-year review of our IEPs to audit us, so it's a big, heavy lift.
I don't understand how they can ask us to do all of this if I'm done. Any district, at least any district, yes, that's just not right.
We've been asking, I've been asking that question, and what has been explained to me by some ODE staff is, these are all different departments in ODE, and so I don't think they're aware that, like, the special education department is auditing the same time the Title 1 department is auditing, but like, I just don't think they're having transitioned in their leadership, there's a new.
So we have selected for during the year by different.
Yeah, that's what it feels like.
Yeah, it really does.
And so are we one of the only ones that has your special opportunity, or the other district?
As far as I'm, the, my other fellow superintendents that I've asked, does anyone else have five? Nope, so, and that's probably a random sample of about 15 superintendents I've asked, so yes, we, I could call and ask, is that the foot we want to get off with the new head of ODE? I've been, I've been kind of balancing the politics of not wanting a big target on Pus Bay versus, you know, the first interaction with the new deputy superintendent, whatever her title is.
Lisa has her hand up.
Yeah.
Oh, the other thing is, a lot of the bigger districts, there's one person that does special education, there's one person that does ELL, it's just we're that perfect size that I get to do them all, except for.
That's what I was just going to say, I was like, this is heavy for you, especially.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's my last year, I'm going out for the bang.
And then, we have one more I didn't even mention, this is a new one, we are, have been selected to be audited for our ESER funds, our elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, we don't even know what they're auditing, because they're one-time funds, so we have a webinar tomorrow, actually, we've been invited by a sponsor, we've been invited to attend a webinar, so we can learn what they're going to audit for ESER funds, so we'll know more about that one, so I just wanted to give you a heads up, that's a big theme for us in the next few months, is a lot of auditing, so Marina and I, Brian is involved with the ESER funds, the new facilities director, we, we're going to be learning a lot, so, and then, just to give you an update, the integrated guidance in our plan, we submitted in March, we got approval, all the way through, they've approved our longitudinal growth performance targets, now we're in a stage where ODE needs to send us the final grant agreement, which needs to come before the board for board approval, but they told us, they sent us an email, the process has been delayed, as ODE, the allocation amounts, because the legislature, I think we're getting a little more money than what was anticipated, legislature approved a little bit more, but the Department of Administrative Services, DAS, DAS for the state, hasn't released statewide every district's new allocation amount, so ODE is waiting for them to determine how much money we're getting, and then they'll send us the grant agreement, so as soon as we get that grant agreement, we'll bring it for the board, for you to consider approving, so we can finalize getting all of those funds that will be coming our way to support our integrated guidance plan, so that's updated on that. Just two for the month, my last two pieces, you know, I like to mention the awareness campaigns for the month, September has two major awareness campaigns that we want to put out there, first is National Attendance Awareness Month, and we've already started talking, we have a great attendance team, that, and it's part of our strategic plan around developing this multi-resistanceal support, around supporting families to getting their students on time, we are, we just received our preliminary data for the state report card on this, so the celebration is, we did go up 5% for our regular attenders from last year, so we're seeing improvement, which is fantastic, the goal, however, we went from 49% to 54% regular attenders, which is far below the numbers we used to see before COVID, we haven't recovered, we're going in the right trajectory, we still have more work to do, so I'm pleased, I'm hoping all the families out there, we could really encourage getting students extra to come to school, and we have attendance advocates and resources and supports, so if any families are experiencing barriers to be able to get their students to school, please talk to your front office, and we can get referrals, services, supports, what families need to help remove the barriers, because we want to make sure that our, our students are coming, and we have supports and resources available to help them, so I just wanted to get that out there. And then finally, September is National Suicide Prevention Month, and I know you've heard me speak about this, the point of the month is to help destigmatize discussing suicide and mental illness, and to promote mental health strategies that help our school communities not just live, but live happier lives, you know, last year, as you're aware, our, our community did experience the loss of a, of a, of a teen to complete suicide, and this is just part of a larger trend, I just read a study, suicide completion by teenagers in this country has risen 48% from 2011 to 2021, it's a huge drastic increase, 48% in 10 years. One of the many things I love about Pus Bay is the mental health supports we do have available in our community, and we have, again, our partnerships with Waterfall and with Pus Health and Wellness to get, to provide therapists in our school, so I'm asking anybody, students, families, staff, if you hear anybody speaking about suicide or suicide ideation, please refer them, we do have community resources available, that we can help support anybody in need. Anyway, it's the worst thing in the world to lose a student, there's something, it's so terrible, so, I just want us to keep being aware of the resources that are available, and supporting each other, and if you hear something, you got to speak out and get that person help and assistance, know you're there, they know you're there, they know there's resources available, so, and that's how important.
Thank you, Marina. Any questions?
I had one question, with the invitation allowed, did they send any grants or personnel or funding to help with those in any way?
No, but ODE has increased their staffing considerably, so they have a lot more staff that are overseeing compliance in this, these audits, so the staffing to support this work of administering all these huge grants is going to ODE and not to the districts, so it would be nice if it were maybe evenly distributed, so that we get additional support also, as they have more people doing the audits, it would be nice if we had more staff to help.
Bree made a comment on here, the biggest win in attendance this year was Destinations on the first day of school, all students except two excused absences attended, go Destinations team.
Woo! Yay, Destinations.
One, one thing to note with the ODE audits, at least the fiscal ones, are they, they have selected IDEA for a year that has already been audited by our local audit firm, so all of the documentation has been pulled together by the business office, which is great, same for ESER, so those are already audited in our financial audit, so that takes a big portion of the risk and the work cost, thankfully, so, yeah, only one spike to the good news, but we'll take it.
Well, thank you.
All right, that was our adjustment.
Yeah, this was just an item for information, the, I believe it was just, yeah, at the secondary level, they moved grading day from January 26th to February 2nd, and it just evened out the trimesters, there's no change in days, no dropping the date, nothing like that, they just moved the grading day, but we thought we should make you aware of it, so that's what that's for.
Thank you for that information. The Pus Bay's update, is that you have it?
I'll do it, so we, our last facilities meeting was on August 17th, and that's when it's actually tomorrow, which is September 12th, I think I'm about to attend, on the 17th meeting, we review a programs moves committee, which involves a few people from the community, so if you're interested in being part of this, is to get ahold of our superintendent, or Dave, that'd be the quickest, fastest, best route, and then, that's a volunteer role for our parents and guardians, and then we got our information off our softball facility, that we're working on, HG's working on revising this, the structural components of the facility to try and lower the cost, and then that's going to back out for bid sometime later this month, September, which is that for facility, and then, we got our overview too of the different schools, and how many classes are getting new carpet, and it seems like all the schools are getting a lot of awesome stuff done, I'm inviting, so.
Perfect, thank you, any questions?
We meet tomorrow.
We meet tomorrow, 9 o'clock at that moment, yes.
And Kim, I think we did miss an item under superintendent's, superintendent's update, there was potential membership for LRFE committee, which you have a sheet for.
Okay. And what I had asked, so we are, you know, we have that official contract with, what is it, BRIC and HG, what's her acronym?
HE.
HGE, to do, to develop a 10-year long-range facilities plan, and it has two components, one is the needs assessment, and BRIC is taking, no, HGE taking lead on that, we're actually going to report tomorrow, the facilities committee on the update on the needs assessment, and then it kicks into phase two, because the needs assessment identifies all of our maintenance and deferred maintenance needs, and then the long-range strategic planning committee is going to look at that information, do some outreach to the community, do some community engagement events to get feedback, to prioritize our facilities needs over the next 10 years, so, they are going to be, that committee is going to be meeting from October to January, and then they're writing the plan in February, probably 4 or 5 meetings in that time, that will be facilitated by BRIC, this company that we hired to do this, so I was hoping you all can give us suggestions about who to involve in that committee, so Dave and I will put together this, I seeded some ideas around who, different stakeholder groups to be represented, but I'm hoping you all might be able to, we can send you this electronically, or if you want to do it by hand, if you all can give us some names of some people you would recommend that we reach out to, but just the idea, we're going to get a couple of students, sure, secondary students, they were junior high and high school students, parents, one representing each grade level, community volunteers, so community activists, people that you think the community would be really passionate about, and have information about what we want to do with our facilities over the next 10 years, local agencies and officials, so like, we want to get someone from the city planning department, is there someone else from a local agency that you all would recommend we need to please there, or the fire department, or is there someone else you all would recommend? Facilities experts, and we talked about maybe getting like Joe Splash, an architect that really knows our buildings, do we have like a local construction person that knows a lot that we might want, we could kind of get that perspective, that we need chief classified members who might be interested.
Not her, it's me.
Because you're leaving.
I'm not on the ten, but.
So, I would, you know, we'll reach out to our partners, our.
But, but almost the entire team, other than maybe everybody else is on there, so I hope they're.
Well, like, maybe a custodian, or a maintenance, you know, like, people who are very interested, so I'm hoping, both OSBA and CUEA, we also would like to license staff members, yeah, two administrators, we're looking for sure the athletic director to be on there for the facility needs, or the athletic department, and then another administrator, and central office, I, for me, obviously, we and the facility supervisor and the director of finance need to be involved in all of that, and then two board members, so I, I think the facility needs to, whoever you all tell us, so I'm hoping you all, if you can do it by old-fashioned paper pencil, or we can send you the electronic, if you can give us some names of some people to reach out to, we did look at the bond committee, because we had talked about briefly, who did we include from the community on the bond committee, they were just names, and Dave and me and I didn't know what stakeholder group, they didn't have like what organization they represented, or anything like that.
And I left them on the printer, so I did print out a sheet to tell you what the names of them, I could look them up real quick, though.
I would think that we probably know where they.
Yeah.
If it's for care, then we don't have to spend so long time.
So, if you all can give us some names, we'll have the facilities committee look at this, try to finalize that, so we can get people invited from October to start. So, we need your help to have a nice diverse of stakeholders, you know, to participate, to give us diverse perspectives on where we need to go.
Oh, thank you, and while, you're, are you ready to read that out? Oh, yeah, we never read this before, Dustin? I know him.
Bring him back in.
Yeah, James, I just talked to him the other day. John, Ryan Trendle.
She has pretty much moved out of the area.
I know all those people.
So if you want to, please invite any, write their name down, too.
Ryan Trendle.
I miss seeing Dustin around, bring him back in.
Yeah, exactly, come on, if you want to, I can get that. All right, so next up on the agenda is stipend for board members.
So, that is new legislation that passed, we learned a little bit more about it when we went to the OSBA conference this summer, and I'll turn it over for you, but basically, the summary is a new law that passed, HB 2753, that allows all board of directors from public school districts, though not charter schools, not community colleges, but for public schools, it's not easy, you all have the discretion whether or not you would like to receive up to, any amount up to $500 per month stipend, for, for the time you're putting into your board duties, so that's the bottom line, and you all, especially, get to go decide what you want to, want to do, and we put the detailed FAQ about this in the packet, so I just wanted to give you that overview, and then, whatever you want us to do, we will, Marina, we will stand ready to do whatever the board decides to do.
So, we, we have this one, are you guys still up and going on it?
No, it was a discussion tonight, we have an action item, you know, there's several action steps that need to happen if the board wants to pursue this, and it's on this page, there's.
Page 33.
If you all want to pursue it, we will immediately initiate taking those steps, there's four steps, but we were, one direction from the board as to what you want us to do with that.
I'm just curious, does anybody know what the purpose is?
Yeah, because our board in New Hampshire, we've got, we've got. We've got paid $350 a year. And the chair got $500 a year for the extra work.
They told me so.
Yes. But it was kind of weird, we could cover things like childcare. All of a sudden you had to, you know, leave and you, and make arrangements and something, or mileage and just running around to your school that your liaison.
Arnie, I'd see you.
Yeah, the, the person who put this bill forward was a kid that worked for me for a little while in the legislative. Name is Ben Bowman, from the Portland area. And he is very, very big on inclusion, getting more access to these public bodies. And so the issue was, for him, there are a number of people who can't afford to ever get on a board. And they have family, they have kids, they have other kinds of stuff. And so he wasn't trying to pay them, but he wanted to give them the opportunity to see it as something they could do, because they could pay for the babysitting, they could do the other kinds of things that would allow them to be on a board and make more diversity. So that was the, I believe, his basic premise about why he put it out there. Was to get and give the opportunity for more people to choose to be on a board.
I agree. Ah, now that makes sense, because I mean, now, it makes sense if somebody hardworking on stuff here right now, got grounds. It could be running for the financially hardships even be here. It's a privilege. It's a privilege that we are under tonight, because we can afford to do it to our financial fee. We can run it to co-keel, to put it in there. And we have the transportation, to get works in life. We have childcare stuff, gas in our cars.
And we recruit members of this board who have had issues with their employer, because they work late often. And like, I can't work tonight, I gotta go to a board meeting. And so it can definitely have an effect if your employer's not on board with you.
Their hourly employee, he's actually not working. Makes sense to me now, doesn't it? Doesn't mean we have to take this, if we voted in, it doesn't mean we have to take this stipend if we start choosing not to. There's a way in there that we can regard stuffs from it, if, if we don't need a person there. But I definitely think that's a combination to consider, because that's where somebody else's table possibly.
And one other kind of aha that I had when I read through the FAQ. Already legally, the school board can get reimbursed. It's not considered a stipend. But reimbursed for associated costs you've heard, like traveling to a conference, etc. And one of the legal reimbursements would be childcare. So if the board did want to examine, maybe, one idea would be, examine what's eligible for reimbursement for being a board member, maybe transportation, maybe, or other barriers that you mentioned. That could be a reimbursement if someone encounters those expenses. And, or on top of that, you could do the up to $500 stipend. But you can also look at what reimbursements that you would like board members to receive for eligible reimbursement compensation.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments to this?
So the question is, we have to change some of our policies if we want to do this thing. So I would say, I would recommend that we encourage Karis to set up, I think, the four steps that have to be done. At least so we can prepare ourselves for them, instead of all of a sudden having it happen. So I would encourage that whatever the next steps are, we should actually look at taking them as the board member, as the board meetings go forward.
So I can review that.
I would also suggest that we, if we're going to do it, we look at doing it next year so that we can have it, but we include it in our budget. We keep adding things to our budget that are cost items. And I sat through a meeting that said we're going to be really excited this year, so.
So the first two steps are for the board to amend, delete, or suspend policy BHD to allow for board member compensation. So can you, Dave, and bring that to the policy committee and do the policy process? Step two is the board ensures your budget includes adequate amounts. So Maureen and I can look at the budget, how this might be paid for. And then step three, after those, so we would have to bring the board policy back for board approval. We can look at it in October meeting, then maybe in November, board approves resolution establishing amount of the stipends. We got to pass the policy first, and then you all can have a conversation whether or not you want to have a stipend. And then step four would then be, the business office follows procedures, sets up procedures to make payments. Those are the four steps. So what I'm hearing is, let's get this to the policy committee to review, make a recommendation about whether or not to change BHD.
We feel like that's further from it, if you have emotion on it.
I feel like this cleared up that.
Let's move along.
Maureen, now, Dave, when you did?
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect. Alright, thank you so much. Now, ask the document that you always want to see that you gave away.
Yeah, so that was just added. Hold on, let me find where I'm at here. Oh, right there. Because it isn't an AR that you're required to adopt. So it's one that had been through first reading, so it's just an item for information that now we are adopting this policy. Or, sorry, this AR. We've already, we've already went through the changes, they already went through first reading. It just wasn't in the consent, consent agenda, because you, the board doesn't need to approve it.
I would be a little bit adventurous, but I won't.
Yeah, that was just a reminder. I'll send a form out, as I usually do, that talks about. The forms are really helpful for me, so I'm not digging back through emails, trying to make sure I don't miss something. So if you can use the form, tell me, you know, if you're going, if you're bringing a plus one. That helps with dinner reservations. I mean, the hotel's the same anyway, but it helps when I'm making dinner reservations to have an accurate number. So I'll send that form out sometime in the very near future, but I wanted to kind of put the, save the date out there. It is.
It's a very, very important, it's a very good conference. I will be going, I'll fill up the form. And just for public information, they don't pay for the fun ones, they don't pay for the stuff.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, and 2021, 22 EL state of the book. So, if you let Lisa.
Lisa?
Okay, here we go. I love this one. Okay, this is the 20, June 23 report on 2021 data. It's two-year-old stuff. This is from an Oregon law that passed that directs the Oregon Department of Ed to prepare an annual report on English language learners, funding and student outcomes. So it talks about English learner demographics, length of participation in programs, participation in special ed and related services, and then other information. It's a state report, so when you follow through this, it's telling you about what's going on in the state. And you can go back year after year. There's a link on our website, so that parents and folks can go ahead and take a look at it. This law requires that we give this to you every year, and that we talk about it at a board meeting. So that's what this is about. I wanted to go back and, and, you know, provide you some of our actual data around this for our students. But when I go back and I look at our report cards and the narratives, because our ELL numbers are so relatively low in 21, 22, we only had 54 ELL students. So when you break that down into two different elementary schools and three sixes and things, that the N's are so low that we don't get that data. The one thing I can tell you is that of, in 21, 22, of our 54 ELL students, 34 of them were on track for, to, for English proficiency, which is 64.8%. And again, this is, you know, two-year-old data or three-year-old data. So we're, we're doing okay. And I wish I could give you more, but I can't, but that's what I got.
I, we need a celebration here, at least. We need to celebrate this with our ELL staff. I'm looking at our preliminary report card data that's coming out. And this is preliminary, so it's not highlights, but right now it's showing our ever English learners, so students who have been ELL. Their four-year graduation rate is 8% higher than the district average, which is phenomenal. And their five-year completion rate is, they don't even give us the number, it's greater than 95%.
So just, no, Karis, because our, our numbers are so low that it's really, like, we ended up in House Bill 3499 I, being identified for our graduation rate, because we only had two students. So when one of them didn't, our graduation rate was 50. And then when we had two of them, that was zero. So be careful, because sometimes it looks good, but our N is so low that it's not really. Yeah.
But it's, it can take wild swing variations.
Yeah.
Report on the on-track data, because we just have at least.
Yeah, but, but our, but our kiddos, as far as English language arts and where they're going, are not significantly below our other students. They're pretty much right on track. They're making the same progress as our gen ed students, which is a good thing.
Alright, I'm, we're celebrating that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. We have board member highlights. It is the very beginning of September, and who wants to go first, I am.
I am. I actually had grade final registration. I helped at Marshall Junior High School. And it was really smooth, good operation there. I did PE year one, so it was really fun. The kids all get embarrassed because their parents want to hold up their uniform and like, you know, seems, it was really cute. I know it's fun. It was good just to like, have that good energy. And kids excited to go back to school, and, you know, people seeing their friends for the first time. So it was a lot of fun energy, and a lot of kiddos coming through, and it was, it was nice. I enjoyed it, and it was.
Was it Marshall or?
Marshall Junior. Yes, so, like, a lot of them were second graders, so, yeah.
The time is so tiny, and then by the time they hit to the high school.
Yeah.
Yes. Once the five foot, now you're six foot tall.
It's a good choice.
Yes, we loved getting their, their A's before. I'm not the one who spent time with them, but they, that's right then. They did their A's before, they're good, you know, so.
Official.
Yes. So that was good. It was exciting, it was nice. It was a rough chapter.
Okay, Campbell?
Okay, so I attended the Sunset Site Council meeting today. And we had an agenda, stuff lined up, stuff they'd done, and they're voting. And it was pretty cool to go in, by day one, round one with them. And they invited me right in. They did ask about Arnie. They, they didn't know that we rotate schools, so I haven't. He's not mad at me, he said, he likes them. It's my turn, it's my turn to come to Sunset. And so it worked out good, and looking forward to our next meeting. Yeah, we're doing nice stuff over there.
And I have Madison, and so it's hardly interested, you know, me, and inviting me to, she was sent up there. I don't know if she has already the site council meetings, and inviting me to the school. And I'm very excited to get on board and be able to go with it. I did have to put this, so. Masked up, because I don't have it, as it's today, but definitely did not want to bring anything to the school. So I've been away, yes, absolutely. And so, yes, but I do plan on coming out, and I'm very, very excited about that school. The library, the meeting, it's one of my favorites. And definitely, it brings us everything. It's just so, it opens my heart to be a school. Anybody else have something to add?
Last month, I went over and echoed Eli at the high school. And he took me on a tour. We walked a mile and a half.
Wow.
Up and back every floor. And then we came down here, and we saw the gyms and everything. He's very proud of the school, and was really, this was in August before I took off to New Hampshire. But he was really excited about the school year, and.
Yeah, he's part of our team. I'm a part, and they did hear, and my goal is to get in those come up Sunday, so. I'm not joking.
And I'm going to start going to the site meetings next month, yes, when I'm.
Well, I got to go through the Marshall registration, suit registration process for the last time. It was very, very speed, here in and out of twenty minutes or so. That included having to go back and go back to another station and go make paper stuff. I also got a fairly good score of the district. Over the summer, I've been doing various coding robotics programs. The last one was actually three weeks, not three, so three days over three weeks. At Waltham Gulch with Free Landrum and Evervegas, and even over there. And the tail end of that is having to cart and haul all the boxes, the logos, the box everywhere. So I had to head back over to Sunset and talk to the robotics group over there, and do inventory. Stop by Madison while I was in the area. Had to print some stuff back in over at Waltham Gulch, and then made it down to, I was like, well, I'm not about, I'll head down the east side and go talk to, and over there, talk to Mr. Peter. We did a pretty nice little tour of the district.
Yeah. That's fun. Okay, Arnie, did you want to say anything? Hope you're on mute.
Nothing to add to all of that. This is, this is a difficult time for our families. It was the elec, 12th anniversary of our son's death, and so we were in Arizona.
Yes.
Thank you.
But yes, absolutely, fully understand, and I'm happy to with you. Okay, so moving along, we do have our policy committee update leaving.
Okay. So first, let me finish that note. Okay. So first up is, so it's kind of an interesting way I did the first two. We took OSBA's whole cloth. Their model policy was much better than ours. That's why it says adopt on it, and there's no changes. The next policy is the policy we'll be deleting and replacing with this one. It's the same policy. Ours is just, takes the information and puts it into wordier paragraphs that are harder to navigate. The OSBA version is a table of contents with links in it for all of the record management. So it just seemed like a better format. If someone were to need to find what kind of document, how long they need to keep it, this is just a better way to look it up than reading through three pages of policies to try to find what you're looking for. So that was why we chose that. So moving on from EHAR to Veterans' Preference. This was a minimal change from he or she to the individual. And then it, it changed some references at the bottom, so minimal changes there recommended from OSBA. Oh, sorry, I was just looking at the first page. But yeah, still minimal, just minimal language changes, nothing of content. IGBBAR, Appeals Procedure for Talented and Gifted Identification and Placement. It just outlines that if, if someone were to appeal a decision made by the board, they would go through the KL policy. Speaking of KL, that will be up at our next policy committee meeting, Rebecca will be joining us. And we will go through that. So if anyone else would like to attend and kind of see where we're going on that, feel free to do so. I'll send out a link. If it's, if it's linked in public, can't we? This is a public meeting anyway.
They can't make a decision or anything, and we can't vote on anything there, but.
Well, even, yeah, I don't know, it's publicly announced, and it's a public meeting anyway. The public one. But yeah, if you, how about, I'll record the meeting, you can see what the conversation was about.
Well, no, just ask, just ask, because if I want to go, I'm not going to wait till afterwards. I'm going to tell you what I think then.
Okay, fair enough. So we'll, we'll revisit that. Then we have some new ones, policy for paid family medical leave insurance. We reviewed this with Michelle. And as, as I've kind of taken to the highlights in yellow, or what the language we chose to keep, anything in gray is what we'll be removing. It gets really muddy trying to do track changes on an already track-changed document, and it just gets squirrely. So I like the highlighting better. If you guys prefer a different way, I'm happy to do it differently. But I highlight in yellow for what we keep, highlighting in gray for what we'll be getting rid of. One of the things that was important with this policy was making sure that this would run concurrently with. this would run concurrently with, uh, with other leave. So they could use it to supplement and, and make a full check instead of only being able to get 60% or, or whatever it was. Um, the next one is just, oh, that was the AR, right? Yes. So the first one was the AR. The second one is the actual policy. Um, and again, it's for paid family medical leave. All the bracketed language will be removed. Um, and that one, we pretty much kept, it was pretty standard, so we kept that. Pretty much the same. Um, I think that's, I think that's it. Any questions? That is it.
That's good. Thank you, David.
Absolutely.
All right, so we are now at our action items to consider. So our first action item is to vote to rescind LRA request as a cluster group test.
Can we rescind it, right? Don't move it.
One second.
One second, Deb.
Okay, seven. Any discussion? Okay, take it for a vote, Arnie.
Aye.
Seven.
Aye.
Arnie.
Aye.
Man.
David.
Aye.
I vote as well, make sure we, we are going to take care of B, so that we want to see, consider, along with the, the OSBA legislative policy committee position down, because I was south coast. First of all, I'd like to have, we don't have anybody in that position before, um, the husband, who was on the board at EST. Or Brit, who was in that position for a number of years, and then we had someone else last. Um, no, there was a new woman that took it on, and she did really well. Um.
Well, no, I, I don't remember her name.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm sure she did an amazing job. I still don't know her name.
I don't, I don't remember her name either, but I heard that she was great, but now, um, we don't have any more now.
Would you like to?
No.
Do you want your husband?
No, he's not, he's not on any board anymore. He has retired from the board, but I, I thought maybe I might. It's super easy, and it's just one college, one sort of policy update. But I don't know if that's something you want to do on an.
Can't quite hear Kim very well, but.
You don't want to. All right.
Oh, did he, was he serious?
He was serious.
Okay, did you hear, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better. I could hear you when you talk that way. Um, I am not interested in that position.
Okay. I was going to repeat it all again for you, Arnie. Okay, we don't have anybody, so we will not be appointing anybody, but we could appoint David because he's not here.
It sounds fun.
But I don't want to do that because I don't want that to happen to me. Don't want that on the record, that's what you want. All right, future agenda items. Do we have future agenda items that anyone would like to put on? And one thing I would like to talk about, probably again, obviously, is the status of the favor for the board. How that's on, on, in our next board meeting, if we're going to have it.
Probably with the stipends.
Just like, favorite for the board. The stipends, yes, I would like to. Um, anything else?
Are we getting, are we getting that date from one of the schools, or I'll say, maybe some of the programs that we usually don't get at the prom, like radio. We don't like having a big, from radio yet, so.
Where's our meeting going to be next?
October will be in this room also. Um, luckily this worked out. Uh, we don't have any featured schools signed up for October. You want to roll into Little Pirate? We do it in playground. Uh, are, are you talking about their, their updates to the board? Oh, they, they have signed up, it's just not next month.
Oh.
I think, I think of many of the schools, and I guess I'm, I'm just, this is my, my thoughts. They like to get a little more in the school year, so they have cool things to show you that they've been doing, you know, like. So that most of them didn't sign up. I think the first one is in November.
But I'll bring you that.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Well, let's, I'll, I'll, we'll talk to Eli and see if they're ready in October. But we'll get them an update on where, if we have a big conversation to have. An update. I don't want to promise in case there's a conference, but I will ask them when they might be able to join a board meeting. Give a, is that sound good?
Yeah, they'll put them on the spot. We'll have lots of questions, you know, if they're ready for that.
He just moved where he started. The new teacher, the new teacher. I'm so excited.
We are very lucky now, and I did have, uh, I wanted to be able to do a job tonight, but we're, we're still in the old thing. But we're, we're just, so. Okay, anything else before the closing? Good evening. All right, we're done. Have a good night, everyone. Are you hoping to go in better soon?
Yep.
I was involved today. I called over before we were, for Grand Summer.